I'd like to call the meeting to order. The December 19, 2007, meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., and also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system, so should alarms activate during the meeting, please evacuate through the exits and, once outside, assemble on the Las Vegas Boulevard side of the property. And employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. I make that statement just as a matter of course, we have no reason to believe that that would ever take place, but I've been asked to do it and that's the reason that we do it. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by the Reverend Ed Lovelady, rector, All Saints Episcopal Church, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Almighty God, we know you to be a God of grace and mercy. Send down on the members of this council the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may do the work of this council, seeking to make our city a place of justice and peace. Bless all those who come before this council today with your grace of patience and truth. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excuse me? This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and for our first item, we're going to recognize the December Employee of the Month. I'd like to ask Dr. Barbara Jackson, Director of Leisure Services, to join us at the podium. And I'm proud to announce that the December Employee of the Month is Oscar Seda. Oscar? Great name. A great name. Glad Oscar -- there are two Oscars I love in this city. I love Oscar here and I love Oscar the dog. The dog's a great dog. Right? Okay. Oscar is a microcomputer specialist with the Leisure Services Department and has been a city employee since 2001. The Leisure Services Department was looking for a more cost-effective and efficient way to account for visitors at city recreation centers, and Oscar was tasked with researching new alternatives. After countless hours of research, he discovered the biometric, or fingerprint, technology and discovered that it could be easily integrated with existing recreation software. This new technology allows for storage of member information using fingerprint data, and this eliminates the needs for cards, printer ribbon, and cleaning products amounting to a savings for the city of $200,000 a year. He tested the product, spent many hours working with technical support, and helped the Leisure Services Department put together information on the process and helped the product receive complete buy-in from city staff, the city council, and the public. This technology will save thousands of dollars a year and greatly improve the security, efficiency, and speed in which staff can serve the public. On behalf of the entire city council, we'd like to congratulate you on being named the December 2007 Employee of the Month, and along with this very nice plaque, you're going to receive a certificate for dinner for two, compliments of Entrez Las Vegas Restaurant, and a $100 Visa gift card compliments of the Nevada Federal Credit Union. Congratulations.
The other Oscar is just as enthusiastic and invigorated, and we are just so proud of him. He's been a tremendous asset to our department. He brings so much innovation, and he generally enjoys what he does. But most people don't know behind the scenes, and he's also an earnest student, and he's working towards a degree in counseling. So there's a very bright future for Oscar there. We're appreciative of your efforts, Oscar. We love you on board. He has a great sense of humor, and he's a great city employee.
Thank you. It's a great honor to receive this award. I've worked here for seven years, and the time I've spent at Leisure Services has been very rewarding. My director, Barbara Jackson, and my manager, Roy Nelson, and my supervisor, Mark Walters, have made it a great place for me to work and really supported all my efforts there. And this award belongs to them as much as me. Thank you.
For our next item, we're going to recognize a special team of employees. The Team Quarterly Recognition Program is an effort within the city honoring a group of city employees that exemplifies the city's vision, mission, values, and priorities through exceptional teamwork, outstanding performance, productivity, leadership, initiatives, initiative or assistance to fellow workers. To assist in making this presentation, I'd like to ask Acting Fire Chief Mike Myers to join us, and I'm pleased to announce, this is a great announcement, that the team of the quarter is comprised of 62 employees who make up the Fire Alarm Office, right over here. The Fire Alarm Office receives and dispatches more than -- listen for this, folks. This is amazing, because sometimes we get caught up in the day-to-day activity and don't realize how hard our city employees do work and what kind of responsibilities that they have. The Fire Alarm Office receives and dispatches more than 300,000, 300,000, 911 calls a year for three valley fire departments. The office was challenged with reducing processing times for most critical medical calls from approximately, and this is another phenomenal statistic, from approximately 90 seconds to 60 seconds 90 percent of the time. That's phenomenal. The group worked together to develop the Quick Launch Process, and during the first five months the process was instituted, the average call processing time dropped to only 53.08 seconds. As a result of this new program, our first responders are able to provide medical attention to citizens in less time, and this has allowed those receiving the phone calls to take and process an even higher volume of calls. And in the past five months, the team has successfully delivered six healthy babies and saved the lives of four heart attack victims by providing step-by-step medical assistance via the phone. On behalf of the entire city council, I'd like to congratulate you all on being named the Team of the Quarter, and this is great, this script is terrific. Would you all please come up forward and -- no, just kidding. Just kidding. Because of the size of the group, we've already presented you with your plaque, correct? Everybody get it? A few other gifts? And the $1,000 red bonus check? No? Oh, the acting chief got that. All right, chief? Here we go.
Thank you, Mayor. We're always looking for new efficiencies in the fire department, but one of the important things here is not only do we meet our performance goals, but these individuals came together as a group and worked on their associations with themselves in helping each other achieve this goal. It was an impression, I was impressed. You've been an influence on me. I'm just really proud of everything that you've done. This is a huge achievement. I don't know that people understand the differences between 30 and 50 and 60 second savings. It's huge, the difference that you've made, and we're very proud of you. Thank you for the teamwork, and I know we can even do greater things up there. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. How's your son doing? How's your son?
He's supposed to be back in Dallas, or actually, or what, this afternoon?
Okay. Come on, say hi to him.
I sure will. He's going to get out of there.
Oh, is he? Our next item, we have a presentation of some very special awards that unfortunately not many people have heard about. This makes this council so proud that we received these awards about a week ago from London, where there was a meeting looking at the greatest cities in the world and selecting cities who perform better than anybody else in the entire world, and this is very, very special to us. And I'd like to call Doug Selby forward. Doug, if you tell them about the program, this is really something that everybody in this room, everybody who's viewing this, everybody who lives in this valley, could be very proud of.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. As you mentioned, we were privileged to represent the city of Las Vegas at an international competition in London, England. It's a competition called the World Leadership Awards, and it's put on by the World Leadership Forum. More than 400 cities from around the world competed in 14 categories. The city of Las Vegas entered three of those categories, and we're fortunate to be shortlisted in two categories, and we'll mention those a little later. As a result of that shortlisting, we were invited to make presentations in front of a panel of judges in this international competition. We, in those shortlisted categories, represented the city in the areas of transport, or what we might call transportation in the United States, and leisure and sports. And I'm thrilled to tell everybody, and it's been briefly in the news, that we won top honors in both of those categories. In the transport category, we won for our city's innovative alternative fuel program for our fleet. We run about 90 percent of our fleet runs on something other than regular gasoline or diesel fuel. That program edged out some excellent programs in other cities, including Bremen, Germany, where they had a car sharing program, and Ammanabad, India, where they have a bus rapid transit program. In the leisure and sport category, we won for our Centennial Hills Master Plan Campus. It's a $180 million project that incorporates a recreation center, parks, educational exhibits in the parks, library, a fire station, and a police station. In that category, we beat programs from Lima, Peru, and Lagos, Nigeria. And because we won in at least one of the categories we were nominated in, we were eligible to be considered for the top city honors, and there was a city picked for every continent in the world. We won for the American City of the Year, meaning that we were selected over other cities in the United States, Canada, Central America, and South America. It was a great honor for those of us to represent the city and to be able to be the recipients of that award in London. Other Cities of the Year, just so you know the company that we were in, in Europe, Madrid, Spain, won. In Africa, Nelson Mandela Bay City won. And in the Asia-Pacific continent, Oman, Jordan, won. Every city employee, every city resident hopefully is proud of what we've achieved. This was our first international competition. We've gotten pretty good at competing at a local level and even nationally, but internationally, this was our first foray into the global network of cities, and we're very proud that we received such great accolades and honors. I want to mention a few people that we'd ask to come forward just to be recognized, and these are people that had key roles in the presentation and development of our package. Field Operations Department Director Larry Hogness and Dan Hyde, would you come forward? From Leisure Services, the department that put together the program for the sports and leisure category, Dr. Barbara Jackson and Kelly Schwartz. We had somebody that cracked the whip on our team, our team leader, Rachel Gritten, from Mayor Goodman's office. Rachel?
(inaudible)
And the talent of this group that actually made the presentation to the judges, David Rivellman, our communications director. Now, there were many other people involved, I'll just name a few that worked and supported this directly. Esther Boelter, who was one of the main leads on putting the package together. Nancy Byrne and Jesse Harville, who put together a video that I think had salved the city. We had technical challenges, you go to Europe and things are a little different, and thanks to Joe Marsal, Greg Duncan, Mike Wrights, and John Boardman, we had a great technical support team. From Field Operations, Janet D'Ambrasia Smith, Debbie Ackerman, and Stuart Freshwater. And from my office, Gwen Barnes, my executive assistant, who helped keep us all on schedule. So, Mayor and council, I'd like to ask David and some of our team to present the awards to you and the citizens of Las Vegas.
Here you go. This is for the American City of the Year. Mayor, this is for the American City of the Year for the city of Las Vegas. The plaques are not on yet.
The plaques are on the way.
They are, they are. This is for our transport category, for our alternative fuels program. The competition was especially fierce there. Bremen, Germany did an outstanding presentation, and after we saw it, we thought, boy, we may not win, but we were happy to find out that in fact we did. And then this is for the sport and leisure category, or leisure and sport as they call it over there, and this is for the Centennial Hills Master Plan Campus. Tremendous programs. The one in Lima, Peru, for example, they took youth off the streets and put them into programs to keep them out of violence and put them into sports, and put them even doing community projects. Again, phenomenal program, and to be considered among those fine cities and to come out on top, we're just completely humbled and honored to be able to represent the city of Las Vegas. I'm still pinching myself, so.
On behalf of, we have all the citizens of the great city of Las Vegas, on behalf of all the employees who work for the great city of Las Vegas, on behalf of this terrific city council and myself, we want to thank you very much for what you did for us. I'm so pleased that, as a tagline now, whenever I sign a letter or any kind of memorandum, it's going to say, Oscar Goodman, Mayor, America's, the world's, what, the world's greatest?
The greatest.
I said the greatest city in the history of the universe, okay? And our little Oscar is going to recite the honor that we got over there in London, and it's really nice to be able to do that. It's very, very special. We're different than anyplace else. We're better than every place else, and thank you very much. That's great. For next item, we'd like to recognize a very special individual for his contributions to law enforcement in our community. Would Fidencio Rivera please join us up at the podium? Where's Fidencio? There he goes. I'd also like to ask Chief Carrie Coyne with our Detention and Enforcement Department to join us as well. Mr. Rivera has served as the Chief Deputy United States Marshal of Nevada since 2002. Mr. Rivera is leaving us unfortunately for a new position in Phoenix, and he's made so many great contributions to law enforcement efforts that we wanted to recognize those efforts before he left Las Vegas. He's been instrumental in developing several key initiatives such as Nevada Fugitive Investigative Strike Team, which targets fugitives, one for narcotic and weapon offenses, and gang members, one for violent crimes. He also helped establish limited administrative subpoena authority based on Nevada state law for the local U.S. Marshal Service. Nevada was the first, and still is the only district to have this important tool, and under his leadership, the District of Nevada was recognized as the Large District of the Year by the United States Marshal Service. We want to wish you nothing but the very, very best in your new assignment, and on behalf of the entire city council and our community, I'd like to pronounce today as Fidencio Rivera Day in the city of Las Vegas, and all citizens to lay their hands here for your service. Congratulations.
Before you get the mic, Fidencio, Mayor, council members, I'd like to thank you for your special recognition of just a fine individual who's made such a difference in our community and on this bittersweet occasion that draws us here today. Fidencio, while we won't say goodbye, rather until we meet again, it is a disturbing thought that we're losing such a talented leader in our law enforcement community. We recognize, though, that with change comes opportunity, and so we wish you and your family the absolute best as you move a little closer to home and move on to bigger and better things in Phoenix and in life. On behalf of the Department of Detention and Enforcement, I would like to thank you for the fantastic relationship that we have developed and nurtured over the years. It speaks to your leadership and, as well as loudly about the positive influence of collaborative partnerships. On behalf of the city of Las Vegas, I'd like to commend you on the outstanding accomplishments you've made in this community that have certainly rendered it a safe place to live, work, and play. And if I've said this once, I'll say it 100 times, I'll say it again today. When we can put a name with a face and connect it with an agency, there's really nothing that we cannot collectively accomplish. I know your legacy will live on here in the great District of Nevada at the U.S. Marshal Service. We wish you and yours the best. We'll miss you. We hope to hear from you abroad, and congratulations on your new assignment.
Let me be brief here. Really, this is a recognition of my efforts, but the efforts of my office and the team that we have and the leadership that we have in District of Nevada, great management team. Marshal Orange is the United States Marshal who leads our efforts. I happen to serve under his leadership, so thank you for your support, Marshal, and the whole team that we have here. In fact, the matter of thing that we've done has been a result of collaboration, partners like yourself, Karen, Las Vegas Metro, and everybody else, but we, I appreciate this honor from the greatest city in the universe and the happiest mayor in the world and the fine esteemed city council. Thank you very much.
Now, for our final matter, one that is not on the agenda, I'd like to take a quick minute to announce that Councilman Larry Brown recently has attained 10-year employee status in the city of Las Vegas. His anniversary really was June 23rd, but he overslept and missed the award ceremony. But we, we still feel that it's appropriate, even though he was unable to attend due to his dereliction, to receive his 10-year pin, which is an amazing thing. Here's a 10-year pin. Oh, very good. Here's your 10-year pin, my friend, and also a plaque to make sure that you remember that you were with the best public agency in the history of all worlds, okay? And forget about the other place you aspire to, okay? A bunch of dysfunctional people over there. That's it, folks. Couple of gasps. Okay, folks, we'll call item number nine. Pardon me. Any items from the morning session that the council, staff, and/or the applicant wished to be restricted or held without us to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor, per temp.
Your Honor, we have item number 17 as an abeyance item, permanent easement from Walnut Creek Development for a 96-inch pipeline in the vicinity of Desertin Road and Hollywood Boulevard. Requested staff, request by staff to strike. Item number 55 is work card appeal, Jennifer Flores, Metro wants to strike. Item number 56 is work card appeal, Kenneth R. Darcy, Metro wants to strike. And item number 57 is work card appeal, Steve Merle Alberts. The applicant wants that held in abeyance until our January 9, 2008 meeting. And item number 58 is work card appeal, Sheila North, Metro wants to strike. Are there any other items we need to bring forward at this time? CNN, you want to make a motion to remove that and forward, take your proper action, please.
Thank you. Let's vote. Not yet.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just had a question. I just checked with the clerk. I thought that item, that our confidential item, it's not on the white list, though. Steve Alberts?
Yes, it's 57.
Okay. My, I don't have 57 on this. I have 56 and 58.
I read it in the record.
That's okay, as long as I know. There's probably another sheet.
I read it in, I read it into the record.
I have it. My goodness, I have lots now.
Where's the billboards at? What number's the billboard? It's under discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll bring that forward at that time. Very good. All right, there's been a motion. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 10 is approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of October 17, 2007, and the special recessed city council meeting of October 22, 2007. Is there a motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor. No additions or demissions. Make a motion for approval of the minutes, please.
Thanks. Let's vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Items 11 through 50 are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine, they're recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward at this time?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, Councilor Ross.
I'd like to bring forward item 27.
27, okay. Anybody else?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to bring item 30 forward, please.
All right, anybody else?
Your Honor, I'd like to bring forward items number 22 through 25.
22?
They're all connected.
To 25, all right. Any other items? Mr. DePurri, did you wish to be heard?
(inaudible).
Okay, fine. All right, with those items being brought forward, may I have the motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor. I make a motion to approve items 11 through 50, with the exceptions of number 17, 27, 31, 22 through 25, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll do this in chronological order, then. We'll call items 22 to 25. 22 is approval of change of ownership for a tavern license subject to Health Department regulations from High Street LLC to DDRT LLC. This Sepulchral Property Trust, and this is in word one. 23 is approval of a new restricted gaming license for 15 slots, subject to confirmation of approval by the Nevada Gaming Commission, DDRT LLC. This Sepulchral Property Trust, in word one. 24 is approval of a new restricted gaming license for 10 slots, subject to the provision 24 is approval of a new restricted gaming license for 10 slots, subject to provisions of the Planning and Fire Codes, and confirmation of approval of the Nevada Gaming Commission, DDRT LLC, the Sappalik Family Trust, in Ward 1. And finally, item 25, approval of a new restricted gaming license for 10 slots, subject to the provisions of the Planning and Fire Codes, Health Department Regulations, and confirmation of approval by the Nevada Gaming Commission for DDRT LLC, the Sappalik Property Trust, in Ward 1. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Roger Zepolak, and I'm the applicant, and just here to answer any questions that the council might have.
Okay, Mr. Zepolak, forgive me for putting the emphasis on the wrong syllable when I -- Councilor.
I just wanted to, I wanted these items brought forward because, for the record, and for the residents who had some concern by the way they were written in our item agenda, I would like to clarify, for the record, that these are already existing gaming machines at this location. They're, we are not adding new machines. We are not adding new gaming in any way. It's existing, and that's why this is merely a change of ownership. I just wanted to clarify that.
That's exactly correct.
Yeah, and I move for approval.
Okay, and that motion will apply to 22 through 25. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Do you still have good food there?
Big part.
Do you still have good food there?
Excellent foods.
That's it. All right, happy holidays to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, sir.
Item 27 is approval of a new tavern license, a new restricted gaming license for 10 slots, and new Class 3C secondhand dealer license for LVGC, Dewey Business Las Vegas Gun Club, at 9600 Tulley Springs Road. This is in Ward 6. Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor members of the council, the applicants are here today, and I have met with them this morning during our briefings this week. We had discussed conditions that would be placed on these three licenses, and I have had the opportunity to discuss with the Carmichaels, the conditions. I do believe that they have a couple of requests to be made, but I'll read the conditions that we're going to add to the licenses here.
Okay.
First condition is that the tavern and gaming licenses shall be non-transferable. That is pretty self-explanatory, and in these cases where we have a business that's been operating in the county that is either proclaimed or annexed into the city, that license that they retain will be a non-transferable license. Alcohol sales will be limited to the hours of operation of the Las Vegas Gun Club, which presently are Wednesday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I believe they have a request to be made for a Tuesday hours of operation.
Okay.
Mr. Carmichael?
Yes, good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Mayor Protem and council members. We, due to the very large trap shooting leagues that we've developed out there over the past 18 years, we found it necessary to open a Tuesday evening last spring, and so we are open from 4:00 till 9:00 in the evening on Tuesdays, and we'd like to have the same privileges during that time, and that takes care of the overflow in size from our league. And then we have some shooters that just can't compete on Wednesday nights that are churchgoers, and so we have open Tuesday night. I didn't put it in the original hours because it's not a year-round thing. It is springtime from March through May, and then in the fall from September through December.
Okay, is that trapansky?
Yes, but only if the trap fields are lighted.
Okay.
Okay, and the next condition will be the gaming will be limited to 10 slot devices unless approved by the City Council, up to the maximum of 15 slot devices. The next condition would be advertising of the sale of specific grams of alcoholic beverages by any means. Visible from the exterior of the concession shall not be permitted. The next condition would be the sale or purchase of handguns shall not be permitted, and they have a request regarding that.
Yes, sir.
We have, we've never stocked or purchased or sold handguns, but we have allowed, as a member service, our members to purchase them elsewhere and then transfer them in on our FFL. So there is, there is a transfer that we have done in the past, and I don't know if we'd be able to continue to do this or not. We still have to go through the Nevada High Patrol and Carson City for the background check to fill out the federal form, but we do not stock, purchase, or sell handguns, but we have allowed transfers in the past.
Thank you.
The next condition would be the licensing must maintain compliance with all provisions of the existing lease concession contract for Floyd Lamb State Park. And then the last condition would be the licenses to expire at the end of the lease period, December 31st, 2008, unless an extension of time is approved by the City Council. So those are the conditions with the recommendations and consideration for Mr. Carmichael's requests.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. DiFiore?
Please.
Yes.
Mr. DiFiore, the lease agreement they have, it was through the state or through the county? Now it's through the city?
It's actually a lease agreement through the State of Nevada.
Transferred to us?
Assumed or assigned to the City of Las Vegas.
Are they current in their payments on this lease?
That I can't be sure of. We don't get involved in the lease arrangements with regard to the licensing aspect. I believe the, that's what you might have, or Chris Knight might have information on that.
Mark Vincent, Finance and Business Services. I haven't read the lease agreement, but I, my understanding is that it's a quarterly basis, and I believe it's due in advance on the 10th of the month of that kind of quarter.
There is, there is quarterly arrangements, and then there's a percentage of the gross that's recorded at the year-end, so.
And I believe we have an outstanding invoice from the 10th of November that has not been paid.
Now, is this, excuse me, Steve, if I might, are we leasing them, this on a month-to-month basis?
Currently, we are not. It is, it is for the period, I think it's the December of '08. My understanding is, of course, the county gun range won't be open, and depending what council's appetite is, I would suspect if we continue with the gun club, we'd probably put them on a month-to-month.
If I could, Your Honor, I'd like to have a briefing on the lease that they have currently and see where they're at on their, the payment of the lease.
We can do that.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any questions of the Carmichaels? All right, hearing them, then Councilor Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Mayor Protem. You don't mind if we move forward with this?
No, 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 no.
The Carmichaels have been very patient, and it's interesting how we got to this point, and I'm glad you asked those questions because it's important that the residents of Ward 6 and the City of Las Vegas understands how we got to this. They've been operating out there for 18 years, and Mr. Carmichael, not one complaint from your operation have we found. I have reviewed your lease and understand where you're at on the lease arrangements with the, with the state, now with the City of Las Vegas, and I would encourage Mr. DiFiore to brief the entire council in regards to that, so everyone has an understanding. You have a lot of very excitable patrons of your club, and a lot of us know them personally, and we appreciate that. Their lease does expire December '08. I do sit on the Clark County Shooting Pike, Shooting Park Advisory Committee, and we don't anticipate that park being open till, hopefully, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed, February of '09, recognizing construction issues and bureaucracy, it may be later, and I want you to be operational out there, so the time will come that we'll have to review this, our relationship. It's just interesting how we, as we took over the park from the state, you got to come along with us. And because you've got a nice operation out there that people enjoy, the clubs are enjoying it, I had a staff member stop by, and I apologize, I haven't stopped by yet, I'm a little busy as of late, but I plan to, so don't shoot me when I cross the, cross the threshold. We want to continue that relationship and keep your shooters out there shooting. Do you agree to all the conditions Mr. DiFiore has set forth?
Everything is fine. We're obviously part of the old Las Vegas trying to transition into the new Las Vegas, and we, when we get to the end of the lease, the lease states that we go into a month-to-month tendency, and it just becomes very hard for us to plan very much on a month-to-month, so I hope that that gets a clearer, will get a clear picture of what may be happening with the other facility.
Well, I look forward to sitting down with you and perhaps Don Turner from the other facility with the Clark County, discussing some longevity plans with you as they transition, because it's, it's not just going to be a gee, they're open and you're closed type deal. I don't envision that. There needs to be some kind of transition for you and the other park, so I would be delighted to sit down and work that out with you guys and Clark County to make that happen. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Carmichael and Mr. DiFiore. Did you have anything else to add?
No, I did not.
And with that, Your Honor, I'm ready to make a motion.
Very good. Did we amend to Tuesday night, Councilor Ross?
We'll amend that.
Okay, good. All right, the motion, please.
Your Honor, I would move to approve agenda item 27 with all conditions as stated by Mr. DiFiore and, and as amended with those new conditions. Move to approve those.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 31 is approval of modification number one to contract number 060266 for State Legislative Consulting Services, Office of Administrative Services, a word recommended to Ostrowski and Associates.
I just, this should be brought forward so that I can make a couple comments. I would like to be briefed on this item more thoroughly. I think it's important that we, we look at all these type of contracts because of the meeting we had a week ago on our budget and where we're at. I think it's important that we understand where this money's going in and the good and evil that it does for us. So with that, Your Honor, I make a motion to hold this in abeyance until our January the 9th or January 16th meeting.
January 9th. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're going to go to item 51. This is a report from the City Manager on emergency issues. Dr. Selby.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
I'm going to cover some items that are current between now and your next meeting on January 9th, and just make note of that. Normally, we would have a meeting on January 2nd, but because of the holiday, we pushed that to January 9th. After that meeting, we'll resume our normal meetings on the first and third Wednesday of each month. The annual State of the City address is coming up, and we wanted to let everybody know that will be on January 8th. It'll be aired live on KCLB Channel 2, and Talk Communications will carry that for the community so that everybody can see that beginning at 5:00 p.m. Because of our emphasis on sustainability, the venue for the State of the City will be the Las Vegas Springs Preserve, which has a number of sustainable buildings and other aspects to it that fit in with our mission to achieve sustainability in the City of Las Vegas. Mentioning sustainability, we also want to mention for people, it might seem early, but soon people will be taking their Christmas trees down, and we wanted to make note of the fact that rather than set those out at the curb, there are recycling programs available for Christmas trees, and those programs begin on December 26th and run until January 15th. Area residents can drop off their old Christmas trees at 15 different area locations. We have posters in City Hall for those locations, but you can also publicly get a list of those by going to the Springs Preserve website, which is www.springspreserve.org, and they have a button there you can click on to find those recycling locations. New Year's Eve downtown and throughout Las Vegas promises to be another great event. In downtown Las Vegas, the Fremont Experience will host again America's Party, and it'll be a blockbuster event as, as last year's was. A couple of the highlight bands will be the Doobie Brothers, some of us remember those from our earlier years, and, and the Bengals. So there'll be fireworks on the strip as is normal, and again, this is probably one of the most expensive and extravagant fireworks productions in the nation. And just as a reminder, City Hall will be closed for business for observance of Christmas on December 25th and also on January 1st, New Year's Day. And on behalf of our 3,200 employees at the City of Las Vegas, I'd like to wish you, Mayor, and City Council members, the very happiest of holidays, and we'll see you in the new year.
Thank you very much, Dr. Selby. And of course, for myself and the council, we wish everybody who works for the City of Las Vegas a healthy, happy, prosperous 2008, and the same goes for all of our constituents, and we'll even go beyond that and say everybody in the Valley and everybody in the state, maybe everybody in the world. May 2008 be our finest year. Thank you. Any comments or questions of Dr. Selby? Thank you very much. Item 52 is discussion and possible action regarding the city's role and involvement in the 2008 Dr. Martin Luther King Day Parade. Mr. Torres.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Ramon Torres with the Office of Government Committee and Cultural Affairs. With me is Mr. David Scott of the Martin Luther King Junior Parade Committee, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
What have we provided in the past for the parade?
You'll find in your backup, Mayor, we have provided certain support along the lines of cleanup, bike racks that are used for crowd control, and some support for the cost of radios and communications equipment, along with the showmobile and staff time.
All right. It's a great parade. How many people do you think might be out there this year, assuming we have decent weather?
Good morning, Councilmen, and Mayor Goodman, how are you?
We're good.
We believe that it's going to be well-attended this year because we're doing it a little different this year. We're actually having it on the holiday, which will be that Monday, the 21st, and we're very excited about it. We did a little changing around because of some of the things that are happening in the Valley with the different caucuses that are coming up. So this week's festivities are going to be from the 14th of January all the way through the 21st. This year's theme is living the dream, setting new heights in our community. So we're very excited about it for the City of Las Vegas. We have several groups that are coming from different areas of the country to participate because it is being held on the holiday, so we're looking for a good attendance of about maybe 20,000 people.
How much live music?
How much live music?
I need live music.
We have several entries that come every year that provide live music, and we're not going to necessarily put a cap on this year's entry. We usually have about 150 to 200 entries. As we speak right now, we're pushing up the 100 mark, and we're just excited about it.
Okay, get some live music out there, okay?
Some live music.
Really, let's get some, let's get some energy in the parade.
Got it, Mayor.
Very good. Okay, any comments or questions?
Yes. Yes, Mayor. Lively, I like that. I would like to disclose that I was the, one of the former chairman of the Martin Luther King Parade a number of years, a few years, a few years ago, and for that I would like to disclose, but I will not be abstaining. So with that being said, I would like to also go on record to inform the entire community that the parade, as mentioned, has been moved from Saturday to the actual holiday, which is the 21st. So as much PSA as possible, we're trying to get that out to make sure that the entire community come out and participate in the liveliest, Mayor, the liveliest entertaining parade, and the largest parade in Nevada. So looking forward to a great time and a lot of great support from the entire community for, for this holiday. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments or questions? May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor. I move to false confirmation for allowing Martin Luther King Day Parade $16,500.
All right, let's vote. Motion carries. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Happy holidays, season.
You, too.
Thank you.
Item 53 is discussion and possible action regarding the Third Amendment to memorandum of understanding between the City of Las Vegas and REI Neon LLC concerning the execution of a final development agreement for the construction of a sports arena generally located at the southwest corner of Main Street and Charleston Boulevard. This is in Ward 3. Mr. Adams.
Good morning, Scott Adams, Director of the Office of Business Development. This item respects a Third Amendment to the MOU between the City of Las Vegas and REI Neon LLC. The first, the original agreement was dated August 1st. It was amended again for an extension on October 17th, again on September 1, and the first on September 19th, again on October 17th, bringing through today. What we're doing in this one is amending through February 20 through the second meeting of February. It's basically the same as our prior amendments with one exception. Under this amendment, we would be releasing the adjacent site, site adjacent to City Hall, from any further negotiations with REI Neon LLC, so that we're able to negotiate in good faith with other non-arina-related development. As you know, that site, that 12-acre site at the vicinity of Las Vegas Boulevard and Stewart, as I've stood before you, as we've assembled various portions of that site, has tremendous value. We do have a lot of non-arina-related interest in that site. The problem is, their proposal, when they responded to us in the RFP, did ask for an option on that site, and as such, it really tied that site up from our being able to discuss it in good faith with other parties. So by adding this provision into this So, by adding this provision into this amendment, we are able to discuss in good faith with other non-arena, non-arena-related development projects. So, that's primary, the primary change to this amendment, it really extends really time. It's a non-binding MOU with the exception of the provision that it's binding on reimbursement of our costs. We've looked at our costs. We believe that the deposit they've already submitted to us will be sufficient to get us through this amendment, and with those considerations, we recommend approval. There are representatives here from REI Neon to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I don't have, in, I just had a couple of comments. I understand the property to the east of City Hall here, to me, is a very important integral part of our downtown. My concern is the arena, and I would hate to see us becoming, become, to go into negotiations with another development there, and God forbid anything happened to the, the arena, the site we're talking about. I would love to see an arena being built over at the site just to the east of us, and I, like I say, I would hate to see us getting, get ourselves into a box where one fails and we don't have any property, put another arena, Your Honor.
All right, I appreciate that. Would you folks like to be heard?
Your Honor, as you're aware, this is--
That's who identifies.
I'm sorry, Richard Joseph Jones Vargas, representing REI Neon. We don't have any problems with that. The only concern is, as Scott put it on the record, we think that will allow us to move forward with bankers on Wall Street who, if they think you're gonna be putting a competing arena on the site next to City Hall, will be reluctant to talk to REI or anyone else. And so, I, I think if, if I understood you, you wanted to keep your options open, but you're not currently soliciting a, a competing arena on the site next to City Hall.
If I could answer that, please. All I was doing was asking staff to be awful careful in the negotiations in the next couple of months on, on this site. I like, I hate to get tied into something that would, would hurt the, the ability that we might have, looking at other options at this.
Yeah. Let me, let me do state for the record here, though, today, that the amendment, the extension that you have in front of you does not speak to whether it's an arena or not. It simply removes, it states, "The parties agreed to exclude the city-owned property listed in Section three A of REI's proposal," generally described, and then we describe it, "as part of the negotiations." It does not state whether it's arena or non-reliant, arena, so we do have flexibility on that site. We, we have incredible interest in that site. I hear what you say. I don't think we would wanna go forward with anything on that site that would provide any less impact than a, arena might be on that site. So, as we move forward--
It's my second concern.
We'll, we'll brief you on what those plans are and make you aware of what, what's going on so that you can be part of that process.
Okay. Did you want to say something?
Yes, Mayor Goodman, thank you. I, I understand what the amendment does. It does two things. It releases the property east of City Hall for purposes of us being able to consider other options. But as to the REI's property, we're gonna extend the E&amp;A for about sixty days. My question is this, what specifically do we hope to accomplish in the next sixty days?
My name is Jill Ferrari. I'm a member of REI Neon LLC from Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. We have worked very hard, as you all know, for the last four to five months on this financing package, and at this point, we, we just have some, some details, we have a gap in the financing that we're trying to find some creative ways to fill, and we're working on trying to minimize risk to both the city and the developer, and we hope that in the next sixty days, we will be able to complete the financing package to accomplish those goals.
Mayor Goodman, you think sixty days is enough to accomplish that goal?
We do. We, we hope so, and we think that we are at the, the fifteen-yard line. We had a great meeting last week with the--
Which fifteen-yard line?
The good one.
I mean, I know a little bit about football, and depending on which fifteen-yard line.
Well, I went to Michigan State, so I might not use that, that statement correctly.
Well, I'm there fifteen-yard line.
We, we're in good shape. We've, we've come a long way, and we've made a lot of progress. Like I said, we had a meeting last week with the assessor's office to answer some questions. We had some, some differences as to how things would be considered when looking at bonding for the project, and we got a lot of clarity from them, so we're really making great progress.
Okay, thank you. I, I would just like to add that I'd like to echo Mayor Protem Reese's observation, which is, we don't want to do anything with the property east of City Hall, which we're releasing in this amendment, to negatively affect your efforts, but at the same time, as we all know, that's a great piece of property. With everything else that's going on, I would encourage the city to move forward in its efforts to find the appropriate developer to do some good things on that property.
Clearly, we recognize that it is essentially the safety valve, so to speak, for arena development, should we not reach agreement with, with REI. There has been some interest come forward on the site that is significant, and we really can't speak legally with those parties in good faith about any aspect of that unless we release it from our negotiations with REI.
That's fine.
I spoke with Mr. Weaver, who I look at as the principal of REI. I spoke to him yesterday and told him he need not be here today because I was of the mind that the extension would be given, and if the extension was not gonna be given, I was going to make sure that he'd have the opportunity to be heard. I made it very clear to him, I'm making it very clear to you, I'm putting it on the public record, that I, I believe, I know what I want. I believe the council wants the arena in the downtown. We think that it's a, the appropriate place for it to be. We think that it's a vehicle to continue our redevelopment efforts, and I know that lurking in the background, AEG is out there behind Bally's, and from my discussions with folks with the various leagues, I have formed the impression that whoever's gonna get the shovel in the ground first probably has the, the better chance of having a franchise located in their particular arena. I have received several phone calls from parties who are of substance, who want to get involved in the discussion about building an arena in the downtown. I told them that the city is not in a position where we could even respond to such an inquiry because we have the exclusive negotiating agreement in effect with REI. I believe that we are doing everything, both sides. This is not, we're not at each other's odds, but both sides are trying to resolve differences, which will be to the ultimate benefit of our community. But the extension is a real, it's a benchmark date in the sense that if we don't believe on February the twentieth that REI is going to be able to perform, then I want you to know, as far as I'm concerned, that's the end of it, and we'll wish each other well. So, we have ourselves a little over a month and a half in which to get the job done, two months, I guess, to get the job done. We won't be talking to anybody else about putting an arena across the street from City Hall. I think that would be a breach of our good-faith negotiations. That does not stop us from speaking to folks like CIM concerning their project or other developers concerning the development across the street from City Hall, but the arena will leave in REI's hands, and then on the twentieth, we'll find out whether or not REI is going to build the arena, when they're gonna build the arena, that they're gonna build the arena before AEG builds their arena, puts the first shovel in the ground, so we can get this behind us and get ourselves a franchise here and become even more of a world-class city than we were recognized as, as we, this morning in our ceremonial portion of the agenda. But this is serious business. We're treating it seriously, and I want you to know that this is not something that, while we're going to extend it and we're gonna forget about it, we're gonna have reports from Mr. Adams as to progress, and if he indicates that there's no progress that's gonna be made, our interests will wane accordingly.
We understand completely.
Very good. Okay.
Your Honor.
Yes. I'm ready to make a motion, but I, I do want to put on record, you know, to me, it would be a terrible travesty to the city of Las Vegas with all the work that our mayor has done to bring an NBA-type team or league to the city of Las Vegas, and it would not only break my heart, it would really hurt the city of Las Vegas to see it go somewhere else. We've been down this road once before with another like project, and I don't like the feeling that we have, okay, when something like that happens. So, not only for the mayor, but the rest of the city council, I think it's important that you understand how important it is to us that if an NBA team comes to Las, to Clark County, it needs to be in the city of Las Vegas, and so we're depending upon you to do that for us. We gave you our, our blessings, it seems like many, many months ago, years ago, it seems like, to do this for us, and it seems like we're, we're, we're not on the fifteen-yard line, we're on about their fifteen-yard line, and it's, it's scary. So, please, do your due diligence on this motion and, and see that we get an NBA franchise in the city of Las Vegas.
Absolutely.
Thank you. My motion is false staff recommendation on this item, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay. Fifty-four is discussion and possible action regarding an extension and amendment of exclusive negotiation agreement between City Parkway Five, Inc. and TAP Property Holdings of Nevada LLC for the exclusive right to conduct due diligence for the development of parcel J in Union Park located at one hundred South Grand Central Parkway, and this is in Ward Five. Mr. Adams.
Scott Adams again with the Office of Business Development. This is an item respecting an existing exclusive negotiating agreement between City Parkway Five and TIP Property Holdings of Nevada. TIP Property Holdings is an LLC whose underlying interest is access medical out of North Carolina. They have proposed the development of a mixed-use development on Union Park on what we've referred to as parcel J, and I'll just use the overhead to reference where that property is. It's the parcel in this location, if we can get it pulled up.
Can you make it a little clearer? There you go.
There we are. It's, it's the parcel on the south end of Union Park. This is where the Performing Arts Center's gonna go. This is where the Ruvo Brain Institute is actually under construction. So, this parcel here is the parcel in question. The, what we have in, what you have in front of you is an extension of the existing E&amp;A to May seventh of two thousand and eighty. The purpose of the extension is to give the principals of this project additional time to work through their due diligence, focusing on block planning, to really go work through site planning, the, obtain financial commitments to finance the project amongst many other items. Part of the exclusive negotiating agreement is a very detailed scheduled performance of items that they will need to comply with as we move through this extension period. This is an exciting project. It involves a four-hundred-room hotel, which they've been able to obtain the commitment of Kimpton Hotels in, and at least a hundred fifty thousand square feet of medical office space, of which we know there is a major anchor tenant waiting in the wings to commit to. So, it's a project that we believe an, an extension of this nature is worth committing to, and with those considerations, staff recommends approval. The principals of, of TIP are here to answer any questions you, you might have regarding this project.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions of Mr. Adams at this time? All right, Mr. Smith or Ms. Wilson would like to be heard.
I'm Romeo Goodman, Mayor Protem, Councilwoman and Councilman. We would like to let you know, first and foremost, we are on the fifteen-yard line. However, we are in the red zone. We do have Tom Brady quarterback and Peyton Manning's backup quarterback, so--
Say that again, you have Brady?
Tom Brady quarterback.
And who's the backup?
Peyton Manning.
Can't cover.
We're in good shape.
He hasn't covered in the last three weeks.
Got it. So, so please feel confident, we'll get over the goal line. We are very passionate about being part of the Union Park team, and we do request that you each will support us on the extension of E&amp;A.
Thank you very much. Would you like to be heard? Nope. Okay, any questions or comments? I'd just like to say this. I feel comfortable with the, the way Business Development has handled, and Rita Brandon from Newland has handled this extension or proposed extension, because what they've done, and this is the good way of doing it, we wouldn't have the same, I wouldn't have the same fears as I do with REI if we had a program like this where they set forth specific benchmarks that they have to satisfy and specific dates, and this will be carefully monitored by Newland, it'll be carefully monitored by Business Development, and everyone knows exactly where they stand along the way to get us to the goal line, as you say. So, I, I feel comfortable that everyone's heading in the right direction here. They put some money into the project. I, we met the other day, and they're gonna be putting some more money into the project. The project is a wonderful, it's a wonderful project for, for Union Park. It's basically the beginning of a biomedical center in addition to the, the academic aspects of the Ruvo Brain Institute with a local physician, Warren Volker, who was an OB-GYN, expert, genius, who has developed techniques that are extraordinary, one of which, I believe he has a worldwide reputation for being able to deliver babies from mothers who have the AIDS virus without the baby being affected with the virus when it's delivered, which is extraordinary. He has many negotiations with Johnson &amp; Johnson and one of their subsidiary, Gynecare, to allow him the opportunity to teach the use of surgical equipment to physicians from all over the world who would be coming to this facility. So, I urge you to try to get the deal done, and we know that Kimpton, everybody who's ever stayed in the Kimpton says that it's a, a great experience. It's a boutique, exquisite-type hotel that really addresses the needs of the folks who use the, use their facility. So, if you can get it done, this would be a big deal for us. It really would. This is a good project for Las Vegas. Catherine Ross, do you wanna be heard?
No, you've, you've, you've added it all up. I just, when you have the real deal standing in front of you, and they're the real deal because they're out in Ward Six, too, doing a--
Oh, that's right.
--medical building out there, too, and excited to see that go up, and the quality, the class, you've said it all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, good. All right, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. And I share the same comments as my colleague, Councilman Ross, as it relates to the real deal. I had an opportunity to meet with this great team on yesterday in my office, and I've had an opportunity to do my research in advance of the meeting on yesterday, and that's why we didn't go into too much conversation outside of speaking on other important issues. Mayor, you mentioned it. This, this team has been able to set the bench, to set specific benchmarks as well as set specific dates as it relates to this project, this development, and to me, it's a specific vision, a vision in which this mayor and council sees this area in Union Park being developed at a, at the highest and best use. The extension of time, I believe, is, is warranted, and this will allow them, of course, to complete their due diligence as it relates to this project. So, we are glad that you all have chosen Las Vegas to bring this team and, and lay out a great development that we all can be proud of, specifically as it relates around the medical industry. So, with that, Mayor, I will move to support the extension of time for item number fifty-four, subject to all staff's conditions.
Okay, let's vote, please. Motion carries, and there's a Christmas tree in, in Councilman Barlow's office. I think that with your outfit, you might wanna get on top of it.
He asked me the same thing.
Oh, okay, fine.
'Tis the season.
Right, okay. Good luck to you folks. Happy holidays.
I'll say happy holidays, and as a wise man once said, Councilman Barlow, oh eight is gonna be great.
Very good, thank you. Okay. We, what's the number five? Item fifty-nine, discussion and possible action of a development and management agreement between the city of Las Vegas and the Las Vegas Railroad Society for a railroad museum and miniature railroad located in Ward Four. Mr. Green.
Good morning, Your Honor. Tom Green from the city attorney's office. There have been a few changes to the backup documentation-- There have been a few changes to the backup documentation, and I think the only substantive change is in regard to the termination of this agreement section. It's Article VII regarding termination. They have some difficulty in acquiring the financing they need unless they have a specific term that they can operate in, so that people are assured that this will be an ongoing venture. So the agreement has been changed to give them the right to operate this miniature railroad in perpetuity unless they default. And if they default, the city can terminate this agreement on five days' notice. So otherwise, they'll be there in perpetuity. And I have a copy of those changes that have been made also to the court at this time.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions, Mr. Green? Mr. and Mrs. Plitzer, would you like to be heard?
I would like to take this opportunity once more, and thank you, Mayor Goodman, Councilman Brown. Thank you for the Christmas present to put us in front of the City Council today. And I'm looking to hear from Councilman Brown, perhaps?
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to put on the record some of the intent here with some of the changes. The original backup just referenced three issues, and Mr. Green brought up one. In the first paragraph, we expanded the potential uses of the project, just so it, for instance, Botanical Gardens was originally left out of the agreement. So we want to try to make it as all-encompassing amenities as possible. That was that first change. There was an additional Article Two, Number One, the approval process for conceptual plans. The last line was added at the request of city staff, and I agree, the conceptual design and operating plans for the railroad project should complement any city park and open space development planned within the park property. And this is in the event that the city identifies over the next few years or beyond additional park amenities that we have planned or would like to see in the park. We don't want those to be in conflict, so the applicant is being asked to always coordinate and collaborate with city activities. And then just of note on the termination, originally, the standard city language reads, "The city may terminate this agreement for any reason or no reason, any time," and that's typically standard language we use in these type arrangements. However, this project needs to go out to the private sector and especially foundations locally and nationally. And one of the first questions they are often asked in seeking dollars is, "What's the length of the contract?" And that language would literally prohibit, or certainly prove to be a very large obstacle in seeking funding for it, emphasizing, again, that the city is not putting any money into this. We're allowing, through the RP&amp;P process, projects like this to come onto our city lands, our BLM lands. So I talked to the Attorney's Office and asked if we could change the language, but emphasizing on the public record that the city is protected through all this. There's just the normal course of action that if this applicant, as well as any applicant, is in default for any reason, normally these contracts would bring up, that we have every ability to come in and protect the city's interests, certainly the taxpayers' interest as far as this Kellogg's area and the sports park area. Likewise, the land that's being looked at is under the BLM RP&amp;P lease with the city. So there's a whole, there's another entirely separate review process that the applicant needs to go through with the BLM, as far as the actual use, does it serve the public purpose, and that is protected in this contract. In preliminary dialogue with the BLM a few months back, they were receptive and felt comfortable that the intended use fits in with their RP&amp;P policies, but we're going to have them go through that whole process separate from this. Likewise, once that approval is set, they have to come to the city of Las Vegas like any other development project, be it a park project or a building. There's some structures envisioned here. They have to come through the city process like any other developer. So we're likewise protected there. There'll be public hearings through the Planning Commission, working with staff, the various departments. The, in conversation with the Attorney's Office, I feel comfortable that the city is protected, that we have the means to go in if there are problems with the contract. As I referenced earlier, just the length, the length of the contract, it's in perpetuity, but that simply gives the applicant more of an impetus to go out to the private sector and look for funding, knowing that the city is partnering and gives them the security that they can go out and say that maybe a future council that doesn't like a train project could, for any reason or no reason, simply come in and say, "You have five days to terminate." And I just don't think that's fair as far as the negotiation. This is, from my perspective, the easy part. The city has now set the table for you two to go out and pursue your dream, and this is, this is a dream. Talking to my colleagues, talking to some of the people at the city, the odds are against you. This is a project that, if it comes to fruition, would be truly a vision. If those that have been to Balboa Park in San Diego, Carson City has a beautiful little miniature railroad up there in their open space parklands. This is something that will truly be an amenity, certainly with the city of Las Vegas, but as importantly in the area. It's a great public amenity that we, I certainly hope that the dream does become a reality. But now it's your turn. I think the city has brought you as far as we can, and you'll have our support. We wish you the very best, and thank you certainly for your patience. Mr. Green, thank you for your help in putting this together. City staff that has been involved, likewise, I thank them. So, Your Honor, certainly open it for comments or questions. If not, I'm prepared to make a motion.
My only comment is, I'm rooting for Bruno and his lovely wife. I think they came up with the first week I was elected, about eight and a half years ago, with this idea, and they've been pushing it, prodding it, pulling it, massaging it, squeezing it. And as you say, they finally got to the point where the, with the city, that we've done everything that we can do at this point. Ball's now in your court, but I'll tell you, I am rooting for you.
Thank you. With that, Your Honor, I would move for approval, subject to the contract presented as amended.
Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. May I have one more sentence?
All right, give us one more sentence.
I just want to say on public record, to the entire valley, that first of all, we thank you for this wonderful Christmas present. It really is a Christmas present. Councilman, you pushed it forth to make it happen before Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. But it is also a Christmas present to all the children in Las Vegas. And please, Las Vegas, listen, this is the beginning of something really beautiful. And it is still, I feel, the biggest project in the history of Las Vegas for our children. Mayor also add, Mayor Protem, there's a lady here that wants to say hello. She is Alice Fessenden from the Board of Health, and she wonders if you remember her.
Yeah.
Thank you kindly, everybody. Thank you so much.
Very good, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Very good. Item 60 is discussion of possible action on the city of Las Vegas. Oh, pardon me. Yes, Ben?
I'm.
Come on, have you got to give us your name?
My name's Lisa Abril, and I'm Item 58, and I was told to come here today.
Item 58, I believe, was obeyed.
Stricken.
Yes, Item 58 was stricken at the request of Metro.
Okay, so what does that mean?
It means that it's off the board, and I'm not sure what you, are you Ms. North?
No, I'm Lisa Abril, and I was told by Bridget Babington from the licensing to be here.
Okay, here's Mr. DiFiore, who's our Director of Licensing. What's the story, Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor and members of the council, I believe, Ms. Abril is Item 62. For the original draft agenda, she was now Item 68.
Okay, we'll be, we'll be calling you very shortly. No, no problem.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for bringing you to our attention. All right, Item 60 is discussion and possible action on the city of Las Vegas comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2007. Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilman Mark Vincent, Director of Finance and Business Services. This is our annual financial report that I'm presenting to you today. We did the RBA earlier this morning. This year's CAFRA has the Las Vegas Grand Prix theme. You know, we always like to have a theme, so that's what it is this year. I think you recognize that character.
Who was that guy?
Did you put that on here?
No, please don't put it on the OBR.
Interest requires us, Nevada revised statutes requires us to have an annual financial report, so this is that, that report, the reporting on, for you today, for fiscal year 2007. KPMG LLP is our outside audit firm. They're a large nationally recognized, or internationally recognized firm. The audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards, as is required, and KPMG did issue an unqualified opinion. In layman's terms, it means a clean opinion. They have no concerns with our financial presentation. They also were required, under government auditing standards, as well as certain provisions of Nevada revised statutes, as well as OMB circular, Office of Management Budget Circular A133, the single audit provisions. They're also required to review our internal controls. And this year, they identified a couple areas where they had some concerns about internal controls, and they wanted to talk to you about that today specifically. Probably the more significant area was workers' compensation. We, as you know, have to record, have the responsibility of Nevada revised statutes to recognize both a medical as well as a compensation benefit for employees of our police and fire departments if they have heart, lung, or hepatitis, or even cancer illnesses. There's a presumptive clause in the Nevada revised statutes that assumes those illnesses were a result of their employment. A couple of years ago, I think I reported to you that we had Mercer Actuary do a study of that liability. It was in the, it was in the fall of 2004. We were getting prepared for the 2005 legislature. They identified a liability in absolute dollar value of about $780 million on a present value discounted basis. That would be about $160 million. At that time, we discussed it with KPMG, and we did not feel we needed to record a liability, but we did disclose that in our financial statements in '05 and '06, and again in fiscal year '07. This year, discussing it with the KPMG actuaries, they have decided that we probably should record a liability, much like you would with a pension plan, where you have a pension plan in the private sector where there is going to be a retirement benefit when that employee retires, and you can, you can actuarially determine what the benefit's going to be, and you can discount it on a present value basis, and then you can approve it as employment is done over the course of that work history. And that's what they're suggesting that we should do, and we've agreed to that. I can tell you that we have, as a policy, recorded 100% without discounting all the current and future medical and wage benefits for all known claims. What they're talking about now is we should record a liability also for all the unknown claims, future claims that might happen five, 10, 15, 20, 30 years out. And so that's the recommendation, and we've agreed to that. They also had a finding with respect to donated capital assets, which was a communication breakdown. When we have a developer that develops anywhere in the city, and they have right-of-way improvements or other land that they dedicate back to the city, we have to recognize that as a donated capital, as a contribution to the city, and we have to write that on our physical asset books, and so we had miscommunication. We've dealt with that. For the record, I am required to read their observations in the record, so if you humor me, I'll do that.
Sure.
The first observation on workers' compensation said the city operates a self-insured program for workers' compensation. Accordingly, the city should have recognized the liability in its general ledger for self-insured claims received and unpaid, as well as an estimate for the claims incurred but not reported. Currently, the city does not have formal procedures in place to properly estimate the amount of its self-insured incurred but not reported claims obligation or the case development of reported claims. Such procedures commonly include evaluation of historical claims, payment experience through development of lag tables, trend analysis, and specific identification of high exposure cases. The recommendation was that the city annually have an actuarial loss reserve valuation of the city's compensation claims, and we've agreed to that. The second observation was internal controls over recording donated capital assets were not designated, designed appropriately to ensure that they quantify and record the value of the donated capital assets on their financial statements in the fiscal year of donation. And the recommendation was that the city be, city design and implement internal controls to ensure that all capital asset donations are valued and present, presented properly on the financial statements for the fiscal year of donation, and we have taken care of that item as well. Just a few financial highlights. Oftentimes, under the new GASB 34 rules, we have what we call basic financial statements. Oftentimes, folks look at that and get a little confused and reach some incorrect conclusions. One of the things you see on page 28 of the CAFRA, on the basic financial statements that identify, there's a cash and cash equivalents of $536 million. And a lot of times, folks will assume that the city's flush with cash and shouldn't have to worry about financing all kinds of general fund types operations. This graph, as you can see, indicates that about 90% of our cash and cash equivalents is tied up in things like our capital project fund, which are capital projects that are in process, our proprietary funds like the sewer enterprise fund and building the safety enterprise fund, as well as special revenue. So as you can see, with this carving out of the discretionary piece in the general fund, there's only about $43 million in discretionary money in the general fund in terms of cash and cash equivalents, and that, of course, is what we use, at least to be able to fund our operations on an ongoing basis. With respect to fund balances in the governmental categories, again, we have fund balances that are approaching $500 million. Most of those fund balances, as you can see, are either reserved or designated. Again, this is capital projects, special revenue fund projects, and proprietary projects. The general fund portion of that, as far as the fund balance availability, is about $85 million. Again, just a few more highlights. You can see that our governmental net assets, and this includes donated capital. This includes the donated developer improvements in the right-of-way. Increased about eight and a half percent from about $2.7 million to $2.7 billion to $2.9 billion. These are net of liabilities, so these are net assets. Our general fund revenues, it's no surprise to you that we only saw a 3.6 increase percentage-wise in 2007. We expect to see a slightly smaller increase in 2000, the current year, 2008. That was the subject of our discussions last Monday at our strategic planning workshop. General fund expenditures did go up 12%, but that was primarily because we added 95 new positions in the budget year, fiscal year 2007. 75% of those were in the areas of police, fire, and parks and recreation maintenance. And you can see our fund balance also decreased a little bit from 97 to 89 million. That includes the portion that would be reserved. And so with that, the presentation is complete. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, any comments or questions? All right, thank you for the report. We have a motion, please.
Yes, Your Honor, to accept the report as given.
All right, let's vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Number 62 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new massage establishment.
61.
61?
Yeah.
61, pardon me. 61 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new beer/wine cooler on-sale license, subject to the provisions of the Planning and Fire Code and Health Department regulations for Jay Morales, Inc., doing business as Mexican Grill El Nopal at 2000 South Las Vegas Boulevard in Suite C2. This is in Ward Three.
Mayor and members of council, Carol Meyer, Finance and Business Services. The applicant that we have before us today has met our requirements to be considered for temporary approval of a temporary beer/wine cooler on-sale license.
Okay, thank you.
And, Your Honor, just for everybody's benefit, this is in the Stratosphere Hotel.
Right. Yes, where else?
Yes, my name is Peter Contrance. Mr. Mayor, City Council, hi. I want to thank this opportunity for, for giving the license, if we can get it. We're requesting it because the, when we applied for the leasing, they told us if we can, if we can put beer, because in the second floor, they don't have it. So customers are making requirement to ask us if we can put some beer too, that's why we're applying for it, sir.
Fine, what kind of, what's your specialty over there?
Mexican food, sir.
Anything special?
Um, the nachos.
The nachos, the greatest?
The best ones in town, sir.
Is that?
Yes, sir.
You got those little green things on them?
We got, we got the salsa bar from the little grainy things, anything, sir.
I can't wait. I can't wait. Please, approve the beer.
Yes.
You know, it has to have, you know, the Mexican with the, to taste it.
Very good, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, the mayor protestant.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to Paul Stasur for approval of this item with all conditions, please. Wish you best of luck and a good new year.
Thank you. How about great, great.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries, thank you. Item sixty-two is discussion and possible action regarding a temporary approval of a new massage establishment license, subject to the provisions of the planning and fire codes for Lisa Ebrill, doing business as Platinum Massage at seven seven two oh West Sahara Avenue in Suite one oh four. This is an ancillary license to an existing business, which is family care chiropractic. It's in Ward one. Ms. Myers.
Mayor members of council, the applicant you have before you today has met our criteria for consideration of temporary approval of this license.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Brill?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, this is your item?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to say anything to us?
No.
All right, very good. All right, are there any questions, Ms. Meyer or Ms. Brill? All right, say none. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I'd like to, again, emphasize for the record that the business is already here, it's chiropractic, and this is a massage activity that will be going along with the chiropractic service that's provided. And I have a son-in-law who's a doctor who says this is very much needed for people who are taller, so they often need this out. But in any case, I also would like to, however, ask to have the hours of operation be Monday through Saturday, eight to six P.M.
Yes.
That's my understanding, that's what is there with the doctor.
Yes.
And that's what it would be for the massager also.
We can do that, we can condition the license. And also, for the record, this is just one room.
One room.
Okay, and that's agreeable, Ms. Brill?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Then we have the condition of hours of operation from eight A.M. to six P.M. I move for approval.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries, good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item sixty-three is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new massage establishment license and temporary approval of a new reflexology establishment license, subject to the provisions of the planning and fire codes for Five Star Consumers, Inc., doing business as Sunflower Massage at twenty-one twenty-seven Paradise Road, and this is in Ward three. Mr. DeFure.
Mayor members of the council, with Mr. Tang here, I believe, I have some concerns with regard to the operation of the business. This is an existing massage business, but massage licenses are non-transferable, so it appears on your agenda as a, a request for a temporary license of a new massage establishment. My understanding is Mr. Tang is a resident of California, and he intends to have the business operated by a, an existing key employee there at the business location. Although we have no concerns with the key employee, we, we don't have concerns with the past practice of the business operation. Generally speaking, when, when we have an absentee licensee, we do have concerns because he's not there to be able to manage the business. Additionally, he has a reflexology business, which is limited to the feet and the hands, and he has a massage business, which is full-body massage. He has several rooms in this facility, and a condition on the license that I would like to see have is that he designate which rooms are for massage and which rooms are for reflexology. So enforcement-wise, we know which, which activity they can do in each. So I'm going to read the conditions that I'd like to have council consider.
Mr. DeFure, if I could ask you a question first, though, please.
Certainly.
How many massage partners do we have in the city of Las Vegas, on, this is off the top of your head, that do we have out-of-state owners?
We've got roughly about seventy-five licensed massage establishments, out-of-state owners. I would say it'd have to be five or less.
I, I just can't, I really have a hard time approving something like this. It's just, the problems that we've had, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but the problems we have, you have to have somebody there that is part-owner responsible. Yeah, you can have a key employee, but the key employee can do whatever they want without the owner being there watching them and stuff, and it's just really hard to, we don't have enough time, staff, money to go out there every day and make sure that it's being operated like an owner would if he was there, so I, I really don't, I don't, I don't, I can't support having an out-of-state owner on something like this here, not in this location here. It's, it's oversaturated already with massage partners. I know this is an existing facility, but I, I would rather, I would rather see somebody operating it that owns it. It's just a feeling that I have over there.
Okay. If you'd like, just for clarification, a denial of a temporary license means a denial of the permanent license. If you'd like to have this item stricken from the agenda, he would still go through the background investigation, and if he would like to meet with me, and we would discuss the issue of him being a non-resident of Nevada, operating this establishment, we can do that, and if we have a comfort level, we can bring it back on the agenda.
I would, I would like that.
Okay, then I'll request that the council strike this from the agenda.
That'd be my motion. All right, that's a motion.
Excuse me, Councilman. Can I ask one statement? We are, our company is incorporated in Nevada, so even though I'm from California, will it make any difference?
Do, do you live here?
No, I plan to, because my company has been incorporated in Nevada for two years.
Well, if you, if you live here, it, it, it puts a whole different light on the, the whole, the whole project, but again, though, you don't live here now, and I, I would just like to have this item stricken, and we will have it later.
Okay.
All right, that's a motion, let's vote. Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Hang on.
All right, item sixty-four is R eighty-seven dash two thousand and seven, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the city of Las Vegas redevelopment agency in connection with the commercial visual improvement program agreement between the agency and Stratavegas LLC located at twenty-three oh five East Bonanza, in Ward three. This is related to the item that we had this morning on the redevelopment authority agenda, and there is a companion item, sixty-five, R eighty-eight dash two thousand and seven, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the city of Las Vegas redevelopment agency in connection with the commercial visual improvement program agreement between the agency and Stratavegas LLC located at twenty-three thirty-three to twenty-four twenty-one East Bonanza Road. Both of these are in Ward three. Mr. Adams, I assume the record from this morning as far as the extension of Mayor Protem.
I still, I would, I would like to, again, read.
I try to protect you.
I know, I know.
But I feel, I feel that important. Go ahead.
This commercial visual improvement application is for the shopping center in which my barber shop has leased space and operated since October the first nineteen fifty-nine. I've been there for over forty years. Additionally, I am the property manager, onsite property manager, for the shopping center, and for these reasons, I have declined to discuss this application with either the property owner or the city staff responsible for handling my application. I have no specific knowledge of the visual improvement plans being considered, and I have avoided all discussion of this item with members of the city council. Because of my relationship to the shopping center and its owners, I will be abstained from this discussion and not vote on this item.
All right, thank you, thank you. Mr. Adams?
As you know, these are the two council resolutions that are companion to the items and actions taken this morning at the RDA meeting. With your approval of these items, you will be making the actions taken by the RDA this morning effective. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Adams? All right, hearing none. Catherine Brown, please.
Thank you. On a move for approval?
All right, that's on sixty-four and sixty-five. Let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you. Revote, uh, revote, please. Please vote again. Post. Motion carries, thank you. All right, thanks. Item sixty-six is Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. The term of Brent Blackburn expired January sixth of two thousand and eight. The recommendation is to either reappoint Mr. Blackburn or appoint a new member to take his place. The appointment of Mr. Blackburn had been made by Mayor Protem.
Yes, Your Honor, Brent Blackburn's done a fantastic job on this board. He continues to wish to serve us, and I would move that he gets reappointed.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries, thank you. Item sixty-seven is Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada Advisory Committee on Bus Bunch Shelter Construction and Maintenance. The terms of William McCurdy and Mel Irwin expired January fourth, two thousand and eight. The procedure for the board requires appointment by the city council of either reappointing Mr. McCurdy, or appoint a new member, or reappointing Mr. Irwin, or appointing a new member. Mr. McCurdy's was, Councilwoman Brown's recommendation, and Mr. Irwin was Councilwoman Tarkanian's recommendation, so what are your pleasures?
I hope that I can read them.
All right, there's a motion to reappoint Mr. Irwin.
Thank you, Your Honor, likewise to reappoint Mr. McCurdy.
And a motion to reappoint Mr. McCurdy. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries, thank you. Item sixty-eight is appointment and reappointment of members of the Youth Neighborhood Association Partnership Program, which we call YNAP, Grant Review Board, and of course, this is pertaining to all awards. The recommendation is for us to appoint the following folks: the adult representatives, Elena Milano, Joshua Swackhammer, Michelle Thaxton, the youth, youth representatives, Ricky Pullen, Ashley Burks, Adler Chang, Miguel Gomez, and Micah Sávez; reappointments, the adult representatives, Minerva Gomez, Lorette Arrington, Darcy Hayes, Robin Munier, Donna Toussaint, the youth representatives, Nicole Redford, and Corey Paris. May I have a motion, please, to approve those who've recommended?
Yes, Your Honor, so moved.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries, thank you. We're up to sixty-nine. Planning Commission, the term of Leo Davenport expires June two thousand and seven. This is a appointment from Ward one, Councilwoman Tarkanian. She may either reappoint Mr. Davenport or appoint a new member.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm appointing a new member, who is Vicky Quinn, who's in the audience today. Just stand Vicky, so you could see. And now we're going to get a little feminine on that committee, too.
Okay, well, I see the Quins are here en masse today in support of their wife and mom, which is great.
Did you want to say a few words, Vicky?
Wait, let's, let's go through the appointment process first before we hear from this guy.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, all right, there's a motion to appoint Vicky Quinn. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries, Ms. Quinn.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
Mayor Protem and Councilwoman Tarkanian. I believe that Council, Commissioner Gavin Port shoes are big to fill, and I told Councilwoman Tarkanian when we met that I have a lot to learn, but I'm excited, and I think the nice thing about the whole process is that she beat me, I lost, she's appointing me, and it just tells you how much we both love the ward, and we're going to work beautifully together, so I thank you, and I'm excited, so.
You know, if I could?
Yes.
Just don't let your husband influence you, please.
No.
Okay.
Don't let your husband, Steven, influence you either.
Well, Steven maybe, but not, not my husband, but I'm excited to be my own entity, and I'm looking forward to serve the city and, and this process, and I thank you, Councilwoman, for trusting me, and I, I will work very hard for you, so, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
And happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Item seventy is recommending committee, a bayon's item, bill number two thousand seven dash sixty-eight, updates the zoning regulations that govern off-premise signs, and I apologize, Ms. Lazovich, told her that she could be heard at nine o'clock this morning, and it's now eleven o'clock.
She used to be by the hour, though.
I hope so. Ms. Lazovich.
Thank you, you're helping me with my billable hours for the end of the year, I appreciate that. Jennifer Lazovich, three eight hundred, Hard Hughes Parkway, representing one of the members of the board industry, which is Lamar. We understand that this item's going to be held between now and the next city council hearing. The parties will get together with your staff, the original team, and work on some compromise language on the, the fourth point, so that when we're back before you at that next council hearing, the council will be ready to take action, as we all know that will be the, the last chance we have to take action on this ordinance.
That is true, and I thank you very much for staying here, and what we'll do, we won't vote on this right now, we'll vote on it about four-thirty this afternoon.
That really helps.
You'll stick around?
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Catherine, do you wish to have the bill read, or is it sufficient that we just move to obey it?
I think it's sufficient to move to obey it, because we've presented it many times to the public already in written form.
Very good, thank you. Let's vote on the abeyance. Post, please.
Mayor, before we vote, what do we, what is the date that we're abeying it to?
January ninth. That's, that's the drop dead date, we have to act by that point.
Okay, great.
Okay, post, please. Motion carries, thank you. Item seventy-one is bill number two thousand seven dash sixty-one, annexation number ANX two three six three five, property located at forty-five oh five Balsam Street. Councilwoman, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you, Councilwoman, bill number twenty-seven dash sixty-nine, orders to extend the boundaries of the city to particular severance lines of the annex to make its inhabitants subject to laws obligations to the benefits of the city and provide for other related matters.
Thank you. Councilwoman, your motion, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you, let's vote. All right. Motion carries, thank you. Item seventy-two is bill number two thousand seven dash seventy, annexation number ANX dash two three six three seven, property loc, is that the same one? Different? Property located at forty-six thirty-three Balsam Street. Councilwoman, do you wish to have the bill read, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, bill number twenty-seven dash seventy, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to particular severance lines of the annex to make its inhabitants subject to laws obligations to the benefits of the city and provide for other related matters.
Thank you. Councilwoman, your motion, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you, let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries, thank you. Item seventy-three is bill number two thousand seven dash seventy-one, annexation number ANX two three six three nine, property located at forty-five fifteen Balsam Street. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, bill number twenty-seven dash seventy-one, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to particular severance lines of the annex to make its inhabitants subject to laws obligations to the benefits of the city and provide for other related matters.
Councilwoman Tarkanian, your motion, please.
Move to approve.
Let's vote. Post. Motion carries, thank you. Item seventy-four is bill number two thousand seven dash seventy-two. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, please.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman, bill number twenty-seven dash seventy-two, in order to update certain municipal code provisions pertaining to municipal court and provide for other related matters.
Any motion, please.
Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries, thank you. That is one that is subject to some note. This is the new municipal court appointment, which, which is something that was enacted at our last legislature, if I'm correct, that we have the authority to have a municipal court, Masters, is that the woman?
Eighty.
Eighty? Okay, all right, we'll talk about it at that time, very good. Okay, seventy-four, five is bill number two thousand seven dash seventy-three, clarifies the zoning treatment of manufactured homes. Councilwoman?
Move to... Move to-
Would you like to have it read?
Yes, I would.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Bill number twenty-seven to seventy-three, in order to clarify the zoning treatment of manufactured homes and provide for other related matters.
Okay, any motion, please.
Move to approve.
Thanks. Let's vote. Post. All right, please push again. Vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item seventy-six is Bill number two thousand seven dash seventy-four, Updates the Zoning Provisions Pertaining to Adult Daycare Centers and Family Child Care Homes. Let me ask, Mr. Jervik, you know, I always abstain when childcare matters. I don't think I have to abstain on this, do I?
Give me one moment, Your Honor. I don't think this has any effect. I know the reason you abstain in the past is because your wife's business is regulated by the-
Childcare Licensing Board.
Exactly. And I don't think this has any effect on that at all.
Very good, thank you. All right, Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Bill number twenty-seven to seventy-four, in order to update the zoning provisions pertaining to adult daycare centers and family childcare homes and provide for other related matters.
All right, thank you. And Councilwoman, your motion, please.
Move to approve.
All right, please vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seventy-seven, Bill number two thousand seven dash sixty-four, Provides that Planning Commission Action on Most Special Use Permit is Final unless appealed or requested for review by a member of the City Council and modifies certain provisions regarding related hearings and appeals so as to conform to state law. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
No, you, Mayor.
What?
I just asked you to, I wanted to make a comment on this item. There has been some confusion. I would ask, I would ask Mr. Jervik to please have Mr. Steed explain to the other councilmembers why this bill is still here. I understand there's some things in here you want to provide, but there's something that's going to be taken out and put in. And here comes Mr. Steed now. So I just wanted the counsel-
Okay, because I know this is eligible for adoption at a later meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, this is not eligible for adoption today. The reason I asked that it be continued over is there's some housekeeping matters that we can take care of. The bill, the essence of the bill will change. It'll still be about the planning department, but it won't be, the focus of it won't be taking away the council final action on use permits.
All right, very good.
I just wanted to add on the record, John.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, well, move on to new bills, then.
Mr. Mayor, we just want to go on record here. I want to understand, because of the Recommendation Committee, Mr. Barlow, Councilwoman Barlow had made a recommendation that it would be heard at January fifteenth. And is that still true? Okay, I just wanted to specify that.
Or recommending on the fifteenth, right. Okay, very good. Okay, new bills, items seventy-eight through eighty-two, Bills two thousand seven dash seventy-five through two thousand seven dash seventy-nine will be heard at the Recommending Committee meeting on Tuesday, January fifteenth, two thousand eight. Mr. Jervik, could you please read those?
On behalf of you, Your Honor, Bill number twenty-seven to seventy-five, in order to create the city's laws to satisfy special improvement district number fifteen ten, shadow Cliss Parklea, I two fifteen to Lone Mountain Road, prescribing details in connection therewith and other matters relating thereto. Bill twenty-seven to seventy-six, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to particular severance lines to be annexed to make its inhabitants subject to laws, obligations, and benefits of the city and provide for other related matters. Bill twenty-seven to seventy-seven, in order to implement Section four point oh four oh, the city charter, belonging to the appointment of certain hearing commissioners and provide for other related matters. Bill twenty-seven to seventy-eight, in order to clarify the process for the non-municipal business licenses and provide for other related matters. And finally, Bill number twenty-seven to seventy-nine, in order to allow short-term vacation rentals in certain residential districts as a conditional use and provide for other related matters.
All right, thank you very much. Councilwoman, will you be available on the fifteenth?
Yes, I will, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. And Councilman Barlow, will you be available?
Yes, Mayor.
Very good. Then you'll be assigned those particular bills.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
May I ask our city attorney a question about Agenda Item Number eighty?
Sure.
The way that bill reads, and I'm referring to the Proposed Subsection two D, it's talking about the qualifications of our future hearing commissioner. It says, "Have a bona fide resident of the city for not less than one year, next preceding his appointment." It's my understanding that that language, a residency requirement language, was in the initial bill that was provided to us by the municipal court?
That's my understanding as well.
And could you define what that means? Because I anticipate this council will make an appointment sometime in the next sixty to ninety days. So does that mean that an applicant must reside in the city one year prior to their date of appointment?
That's correct. You have to have as your primary residence a city address one year prior to your appointment. And you have to have been a resident for that one-year period.
I understand that. So, if we're going to appoint in January or February, one who's applying must look back twelve months preceding that appointment to be made in the future to determine whether they resided in the city for a year.
That's correct. And typically, when we give out applications for jobs like this that have residency requirements, that would be right on the application itself, where they'd have to identify themselves as a resident, how many years they've been a resident.
Now, this is different from a municipal court judge because that residency requirement is only thirty days preceding the date of-
The last day of filing for the election.
The last day of filing for the election.
And that's the same for the city council. You have a thirty-day residency requirement. This position, for whatever reason, has a one-year residency requirement.
And do you know why that is part of this bill?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We're in recess until one o'clock. Mr. Ferguson, are you going to be applying for that job? Happy New Year. You haven't listened to me yet?
I have.
That's why I asked whether you were going to apply.
Thank you. Have a good holiday. The fifteenth of January. Okay.
It's a program that they wrote.
Yeah, but the more patched you put, top and bottom, then I have no space for the scroll on what I'm trying to tell them in the middle.
Who is your IT person?
I don't care.
No. That was me, the developer, in Montes. I hadn't, yeah, Kelly, but I mean, I didn't. Jennifer Lazovich.
Get it?
But the rest, we go. What's that mean? I know she wanted to just make sure that you put the abeyance items in there. Make it permanent. I am, that's what I suggested. I was told that was somehow possible. That's what this was, the post message. We just had a standard. It runs all the time. And we just put it. I think it's part of this room.
No.
I thought you-
You can't. By two different scrolling, I can hear people going, "Great." I'm not, I'm not totally perfect. I'll say, you can have it on the floor.
True.
So, looks like it, it's a one, and I'm up here for fifteen minutes.
I'll say, we're just nothing. They really push the issue. You know, having to deny it. They get the beginning. They wish you to put the definition. It scrolls a good as it starts.
And by the time we got to the middle of the afternoon meeting. I'm telling you. I, I agree with you.
I think we have to wait another minute or so.
Yes. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here promptly. We'll start the afternoon agenda by calling item number eighty-three. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff under the applicant wished to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number ninety as a special use permit, twenty-four five thirteen, Iconium Corporation LLC, thirteen eleven South Casino Center Boulevard, has been withdrawn without prejudice by the applicant. Items ninety-three and ninety-four, variance twenty-two eight sixty-seven, and Site Development Reuse twenty-one nine ninety-eight, Royal Wellness Group LLC, thirty-one hundred South Value Boulevard. The applicant would like that to be held until our February the twentieth, two thousand eight meeting. Items ninety-seven and ninety-eight is RQR twenty-five six sixty-eight and RQR twenty-five six sixty-five, Moon Valley Nursery and slash American Gear Reduction, Inc., slash Wycoff Newburg Corp., seventy-two fifteen and seventy-two seventy-five, Tulley Springs Road. Councilman Ross has requested that be held in advance until our January sixteenth, two thousand eight meeting. Are there any other items to read before at this time, Your Honor?
Any other items?
Here, Your Honor, make a motion to bring these items forward. Take the proper action, Barlow.
Mayor, I have items ninety-five and ninety-six. It states the applicant would like for this item to be held in advance till the January ninth, City Council meeting.
Okay, item ninety-five and ninety-six. Item ninety-five is special use permit, twenty-five oh sixty. Applicant, Harries Nevada V Act eight slash LLC, owner City Parkway, Inc., requests for special use permit for a proposed eight-hundred-foot height mixed-use development in the airport overlay district at the southwest corner of Grand Central Parkway and City Parkway. And ninety-six is Site Development Reuse twenty-five zero fifty-nine by the same applicant for a proposed fifty-seven-story mixed-use development including one point one twelve million square feet of commercial space and a ninety-eight multifamily residential units with waivers of the Union Park streetscape standards, building replacements, and financial requirements, architectural standards, and access standards. It's on a portion of fifty-three point six acres on the southwest corner of Grand Central Parkway and City Parkway. Councilman Barlow has requested that be held in advance till our January the ninth, two thousand and eight meeting. Are there any others?
If I may, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, that was by the applicant, and that is noted in your agenda sheet on ninety-five and ninety-six.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, anybody else?
Duly noted.
All right, they have a motion, please.
I make a motion to bring all those items forward and take the proper action, please.
Thank you. Let's vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Items eighty-four through eighty-nine are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the Department of Planning and Development to have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items eighty-four through eighty-nine.
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to pull item eighty-four and eighty-five forward just to amend the conditions real quick.
All right.
Other than that, I make a motion to approve items eighty-six through eighty-nine with all conditions, please.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Eighty-four and eighty-five. Eighty-four is EOT two-five oh two oh. The applicant owner is Azra Commercial Center LLC. Request for an extension of time of an approved variance to allow sixty parking spaces for two hundred and ten are required on two point three seven acres at forty-four forty East Washington Avenue. That's in Ward three. Eighty-five is EOT two-five oh one nine. Same applicant. Request for an extension of time of an approved special use permit for a proposed tavern and a waiver of the fifteen-hundred-foot separation requirement from a similar use at forty-four forty East Washington Avenue, Suite number one sixteen in Ward three.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've been working with Jay Brown and the owner, Ken Lawson. Margot, could you read the changes in the extension of time, the date?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor on items both eighty-four and eighty-five, condition number one, should be changed to change that the extension is until June eighteenth, oh eight, on both eighty-four and eighty-five, changing condition number one.
And with that change, Your Honor, a motion to approve these items with the rest of the reasons.
Very good. That will be before eighty-four and eighty-five. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Ninety-one and ninety-two. Ninety-one is VAR two-three five nine eight. Public hearing. The applicant owner is Donna De La Cruz. Request for a variance to allow a proposed twenty-seven hundred and ninety square foot accessory structure, Class One habitable with five hundred and twenty-eight square feet, fifty percent of the floor area of the principal dwelling is the maximum allowed at fifty-four thirteen Hickam Avenue. This in Ward six. The application has been amended to include a variance to also allow the accessory structure to be eighteen feet in height, where fourteen feet is the maximum height approval. The staff recommends denial. The Planning Commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. It's in Ward's, what did I say? Ward six, right? Item ninety-two is SUP two-three five nine six. Same applicant owner requests for a special use permit for a proposed twenty-seven hundred and ninety square foot accessory structure, Class One habitable at fifty-four thirteen Hickam Avenue in Ward six. The staff recommends denial. The Planning Commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Paul Hoffman of Moran Law Firm, on behalf of Donna De La Cruz, the applicant.
Be happy to hear from you folks.
Well, Mayor and Council, Ms. De La Cruz is requesting a variance because you can see behind there is a strip of land that she does not own and cannot be vacated. And furthermore, her parcel is too small to be subdivided because it would be a non-conforming lot. That's why we are asking for this variance and the special use permit because the height will exceed fourteen feet for the accessory structure.
All right. Are there any questions? Mr. De La Cruz, did you want to be heard?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Folks, a public hearing. If anybody would like to be heard on this, we'd be happy to hear from you. Yes, sir. Please give us your name.
My name is Tyson Hollis.
Okay. Be happy to hear from you, sir.
I live, sorry, I live at forty-two hundred Helen. I originally came to this. Looking on the map, it looked like the house was immediately behind me. It is not. It's, it's one walk over. I was just curious as to, um, I was just asking some questions, go back to the Northwest Areas Residents Association, so I could report back to them on, on what the, uh, the purpose of the, the house was. I know they were saying that it was, excuse me, I'm a little shaky.
Don't be shaky.
Um, I know that they were saying that this is a new, is this a new house, or it's a, uh, two houses on the same lot?
It will be a new house, but it will be in two houses on the same lot. But, uh, I think it's important to point out, we have stipulated, uh, at the planning commission that the accessory structure is not to be a rental, so it is not for rental purposes. Uh, Ms. De La Cruz has an elderly father, and, uh, she also has a nanny, and, uh, the house is to be used as a home for the nanny and her elderly father.
Would that change upon the sale to the next owner?
Say that again, please.
Would that change upon the sale to the next owner?
Well, that's a question that, uh, I'm sure the Councilman Ross is going to be interested in.
I don't ask because we have, excuse me, a lot of times when we go to the NARA meetings, um, sometimes it gets changed just for the one, and they immediately sell. It becomes a commercial property.
Right.
And we're trying to preserve it as single-family, half-acre, or larger, um, places.
Very good. We appreciate that.
Sorry.
All right. Anybody else, uh, like to be heard on this? Thank you. All right, Councilor Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Hollis, if you'd just, uh, listen to what I've got to say. I'm fully aware of NARA's efforts to keep those properties, half-acre, resident ranch estates, single-family. Ms. De La Cruz came to me several months ago, uh, explaining to me what she's trying to do with this property. There's a sliver of land in front, or behind, it's behind her property that we can't, she's attempted to contact the owner of the property to either sell it or figure something out with the city of Las Vegas, what have you. Um, unfortunately, she's had, uh, no success in that. Um, we are, uh, I believe she's prepared to put on record, uh, today, uh, through our direct, uh, Director of Planning, a deed restriction, which, uh, will be a restriction on the deed to the home sell. I assure you that this will never, in my tenure as Councilman representing this area, and that's all I can give you, that this will ever be a commercial use in this neighborhood. Um, I have many friends that live in your neighborhood, um, many friends who are in NARA, and, uh, will continue to protect this neighborhood to the best of my ability. Ms. De La Cruz knows how I feel about this. We've had a great conversation about it, um, in regards to how it changes the character of her lot. Um, unfortunately, this was the only way for her to accomplish her goals and take care of her father at the same time. Um, and I recognize that. Commissioner Dunham at the Planning Commission lives in NARA. He's a block away from here. He's fully aware of this property. Um, so be grateful your planning commissioner lives in your neighborhood, number one. Um, so, uh, his comments are the same. He knows what she's tried to do, uh, with or without legal counsel to accommodate, uh, the NARA Northwest Residents Alliance there and, and her neighbors. She's a good neighbor. She has no intention of not being a good neighbor. Um, and Ms. De La Cruz, I have too many friends over there that will tell me otherwise, so be mindful of that. Um, this did, uh, was recommended for approval through the Planning Commission and, uh, under Council, or Commissioner Dunham's watch. And I appreciate his paying attention to things in your neighborhood, and that's why he's our planning commissioner, so I appreciate him. Um, so I hope that answers your questions.
It, it doesn't. I didn't want to hinder anything. I was just taking the information back to them. My fault.
But I'm glad to see that you're here.
Okay. I'm glad you're here. Originally, I thought it was a different one, so I just was listening.
No, that's it.
Thank you for listening.
And you did a good job. There's no reason you had to be shaky, as you say.
No, thanks, sir.
All right.
Want to see him more active in NARA. Good to see new faces out there. Um, Your Honor, I would, uh, move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval. However, Director, did you have some, uh, items that I need the applicant to agree upon?
Uh, Mayor and Councilman, the condition with regard to not being rented is already on the application before you on the SUP, and the conditions then will be filed with the recorder on the property by the city. And the applicant has agreed on the record.
All right, very good.
Very good. And with that, Your Honor, I would move to approve, uh, follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval of agenda item number nine, with all conditions.
Okay, ninety-one.
I mean, ninety-one, I'm sorry.
Very good, no problem. Let's vote. Post. Motion carries. And ninety-two, please.
And likewise, Your Honor, on agenda item nine, number ninety-two, move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Good luck, folks, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Okay, believe it or not, item ninety-nine. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings, Centennial Hall's Architectural Review Committee, and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. Thank you. This is a time for citizens' participation. Uh, citizens, uh, shall come forward, please, and they're, uh, happy to, uh, we're, we're happy to hear what you have to say. Uh, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council, and no subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, uh, please come up, give us your name. Uh, we'll put a three-minute timer on. And, um, before you start, Ms. Barnes, I want to thank you very much. Ms. Barnes was kind enough to deliver to, um, Ms. Fretwell tickets, which, uh, if anybody's interested, all they have to do is ask for them. An original, dramatic presentation, uh, Saturday, Sunday, Wednesday, Friday, Sunday.
No, this is the last night.
Uh-oh, this, forget about anything that I've said. Um, Ms. Barnes has tickets for the International Church of Las Vegas, last-night performance. It starts, what time, seven o'clock? And where is it, Ms. Barnes?
Uh, West Cliff.
Okay, West Cliff. So anybody wants your ticket, just feel free to come up and get them. Thank you. Happy to hear from you, Ms. Barnes.
Good afternoon, uh, City Council, Dorothy Barnes, Las Vegas resident. Um, I'm still working on, then I call it my project now, and that's to see Las Vegas become a world-class city, city with world-class citizens, and hopefully to improve my hometown, so if I ever get back that way to visit with my children and grandchildren, we'll be in an overcame, this obstacle of, uh, social, I don't know what you call it, but I'm, the programs, once again, are very costly. It's costing me. It's maybe costing some other people that's not aware. But I'm not telling everybody they shouldn't vote for those programs. The ones I'm telling about, this is top-secret thing on Ellis Airport, Spade. But when I'm affected, I'm affected, and it's the holiday season. I like to see everybody enjoy with their families. I like to be able to go and enjoy. But I'm really having a hard time, uh, dealing with this situation. I can't see who's claiming me on the program, but I was hoping the word would get to the right organization, and they would be honest and get to the truth of the matter. And the Christian community, along with the gambling association, would come to an agreement, so everybody can have a happy and blessed holiday season. And we'll start off two thousand eight with a new attitude, with a new season of, uh, forgiveness and, uh, understanding of all people, and work for the good, the common good of all people with these programs, and their families, and no one else will lose their life behind this situation, or become homeless. And all the ones that are in this situation that may be made homeless with these programs, bringing about poverty, that this, this issue will be in the past, and we'll have a great economical future to look forward to. Because I really need my name off. I don't know if I need to put it in writing. I haven't been able to get an attorney in. You know, I don't have the money to put up front, go get my name removed off this program. It's costing me a lot of money to have my name in there. And those programs will only benefit you if you do what you marked it. They got you signed in as a drug dealer, or prostitute, or homosexual. If you don't give them that sex service or sell drugs a lot, those programs are no good. They're only good for the people that participate. Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
I think so.
Yeah. So my name need to come off that program. And all the ones that voted against it, give them the opportunity also to vote against such thing. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, I hope that, uh, two thousand eight is a good year for you. And if you need any of our services, we have our staff here.
Yeah, I talked to the social worker.
Okay, she's very, very good. Very good.
I did tell her how I was eighty-six from J tree. I know the social worker mentioned it, because they said, two or three years ago, I raised my voice as a staff member. But if you know how, there was a manhouse in there, and they said they got a new staff there, but they are doing all kinds of crazy stuff in the homeless places, and it's not, not sensible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
Good afternoon, Your Honor, Mayor Protem, Council. My name is Teddy Russell. I'm a resident of Las Vegas. I'm getting a job. You can all sleep now. A job. Code for just over broke. This gentleman, you might have heard of him. He promises employment. Work today, get paid today. I think I'll be doing something different than selling ads. Uh, Rolando will meet soon. I went, for sentimental reasons, to a project called Maryland Villas. It's been two years since I lived there. I had the best neighbors in the history of my life. It was very, very emotional. The project came up beautifully. And I was extremely cynical about it. Uh, I thank you, everybody that's involved, and, and this was a combination of help with Southern Nevada and H U D. And, of course, the eggs roll off the counter. There's nothing that's, it's out of plumbing, this and that, but I had the best neighbors. I would, uh, sleep with the living room door open, uh, if I felt like it. Oh, are you out of cigarettes, or are you out of beer? They were, they worked so hard. This is, uh, what we would call Hispanic or Mexican, uh, neighborhood. They were the best. That's why I also wanted to mention that it's just joined my heart. I, the Mayor Protem is remarkably well-preserved, because when he opened his barber shop, I was twelve years old. I had no idea, and I don't mean this facetiously. You must be doing something right. I'll, I'll find out and get back to you. We're very good at making, uh, predictions. Let me say this first. The first six months of Google, what was the number one search? iPhone. Who do you think will be the Person of the Year? I'm going to go out on a very, very long limb and say it will be Magnus, the Bishop of, uh, Rome, Pope John Paul the Second. I have a vision, because I was afraid, scared, silly, it was going to be an animal. I have a vision of him with a blending of Saint Peter's fish from the sea of Tiberius, or the sea of Galilee. Uh, there were so many worthy, amazing participants. Uh, anybody has any guesses on the Person of the Year? If it's Oscar, good, then I'm opening my veins again.
Time's up.
There you go. You're doing that.
Time's up. Thank you.
Hanukkah is what I wanted to say.
Happy New Year.
They're going with my, my idea. The Plaza will become the Union Plaza. I rest my case, whatever that means. Thank you so much. Have a great evening, and I look forward to seeing you again real soon.
Very good. Thank you.
Right here in downtown Las Vegas.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to be heard? All right, would anybody like to be heard a second time? No, just kidding. All right, we just want to wish everybody the, uh, the safest and happiest of the holiday season. I've been told by Councilman Brown that it is politically incorrect to say happy holidays, so we wish everybody specifically Merry Christmas and Happy Kwanzaa. And, um, uh, we won't be talking to you, uh, in person before the New Year, so have a very safe, uh, healthy New Year to everybody, and the meeting's adjourned. Yes. Yes.